...cell phones as this meeting is being recorded. Ellen, can you please do our roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Ms. Callan-Carson?
Present.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Walters?
Present.
Mr. Weiner?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
Chair, Mrs. Granato?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Ms. Angelica Data?
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you. Okay, Isaac, here on again. Come on up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Isaac. Good to see you. All right, student and staff recognition?
None this evening.
None tonight, okay. So, next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for our special Board of Ed meeting on February 8th. May I have the motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Those minutes pass. And then we'll also vote on our regular Board of Ed meeting on February 11th. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Yes, on page five on the report on student programming and services, it said OTS, and that needed to be Ozbots, O-Z-B-O-T-S, all in capitals. And I did notice, and I don't know if this is being really picky, but on page two, it's with the public comment, Sally Keating, it said quit, and I'm pretty sure it should have been quote.
Okay, you got that, Ellen. Thank you. Anyone else for discussion, corrections? All right. So, we'll vote on this amended motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? Those meetings are approved. And now, is there anyone out in the public who'd like to come up and make a comment? I want to remind you that there is a five-minute limit. And also, just another comment, that the Board does not make comments on your time up at the podium. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Curry, 162 Straddle Hill. Tonight, I want to discuss the upcoming elementary school building plan and referendum. First, I want to say that I am in support of the referendum, period, full stop. There is a lot of conversation going on about this, with many opinions, some very strong. There's a building committee appointed by the town council last spring that has been tasked with working with the consultant to look at available town spaces, where to build, and what the project will look like. A big piece of this is the transformation of Webb from an elementary school to a fifth and sixth grade academy. This is huge. This is changing the entire structure of Weathersfield Public Schools. From the location and years that children attend specific schools, to the administrative structure, to the student support staff, since there would need to be a sixth-grade school counselor, and the specialization of teachers focusing on one, maybe two, subject areas rather than the elementary model, where everything is taught in one classroom. I cannot say it enough, this is huge. I am in full support of this as a certified school counselor, as a parent of elementary-age students, as a resident. I believe it is a necessary change, given what Weathersfield has in terms of options. However, I've been involved. I have been at many Board of Ed meetings and specific building meetings. I attend the monthly Web PTO meetings, and I sit on the Weathersfield Schools Parents' Council as a representative from Webb. I have been a part of these conversations and feel I am as informed as someone could be, but that is not the reality for every resident in Weathersfield. And I am here to ask that those who represent education in our town, elected Board of Ed members and hired central office administration, talk about this project, specifically the school restructuring. Reach out to the community. Explain why we are going from five elementary schools to four elementary schools with a five-six academy. Why the sixth grades simply can't get moved to SDMS. Why this has been the decision that has been put forth. How this impacts education for all students. How class sizes should be more evenly distributed across the district. How resources can be more easily shared. How our specialists in art, music, and PE should not have to travel to multiple elementary schools. How there would be equity across student numbers and buildings, so that our student support staff caseloads might be equitable. There is so much good that will come from this five-six academy, and yes, it is beneficial to renovate Webb this way because of the design and structure of the building, as its original build was a junior high. But that's not the reason we're doing this, and I fear that the community at large might not understand all of the pieces. I ask that the educational officials for this town start sharing all of this through every different outreach possible. Coffee and connections, open meetings at the library or local establishments, visits to the senior center, mailers sent home, flyers to local daycare centers, fact sheets everywhere. I am fearful that this referendum won't pass, and I'm fearful that it won't pass for many different reasons, including limited information provided to the community. And with an incredibly heavy heart, I think about a second referendum in three years not passing to support the education in this town. I also know that we are in a very critical time, as the Board of Ed is the committee hiring our new superintendent. I don't think it's a stretch that any strong superintendent candidate is watching what's going on in the town, in the community, in our meetings, and I would hope that what they see is a town, from every level, that supports education. A town that wants what's best for our students and for our educators, including the learning environment and school safety. Unfortunately, I don't see this message being clearly delivered right now. There are a lot of messages out there, that's for sure. I really hope that in the coming weeks, that there is valuable information being provided to the community about the critical necessity of this plan. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we'll move on. Mr. Emmett, you have communication tonight?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Granato. Good evening again, everyone. A couple of items this evening for you. Just want to bring you up to speed on some changes happening within the district on the staffing side. We bid a fond farewell to Trent Donahue, our Director of Human Resources. His last day was this past Friday. This Friday will be the last day for our IT Supervisor, Jeff Telke. While Trent's gone to private industry, Jeff will be headed to the Bristol Public Schools to serve as their Director of Technology, so we wish both of them well. Together, they have provided just shy of 21 years of dedicated service to the Weathersfield Public Schools. Many of you heard that at Hamner, Patrick Cohn was going to be departing the district. I sent you an email today, as well as Mr. Cohn talking to his Hamner community, as well as the staff this afternoon. Mr. Cohn has decided to stay with the Weathersfield Public Schools, so he will remain as our principal at Hamner Elementary School. We do have one current upcoming opening, and that is for the principal at Charles Wright, as Mr. Horder will be retiring in June. We're actually meeting with parents tomorrow evening over at Charles Wright for the parent focus group. We'll be meeting with the staff, or the staff focus group, in early March. The number of applicants that have come in thus far have been quite large. I am north of 40 applicants thus far, so it's a lot to go through, and we're starting that process now. So, the expectation is we'll have a new principal at Charles Wright Elementary School, ready to go for July 1. So, a couple of other items. The budget, obviously, has been a hot topic. We've gotten together for three budget workshops. Coming up on March 11th, I'll be presenting the superintendent's proposed budget for the 2025-2026 school year. Just a quick timeline for everyone. Once you approve it on Tuesday, March 11th, we will have a very quick turnaround to be able to transmit the board-approved budget to the town, no later by charter than March 15th. We will go before Town Council for a presentation of the Board's approved budget on Monday, March 17th, at 7:00 here in council chambers. And I also want to make sure everyone is aware of the public budget hearing that will take place here on Monday, April 21st, at 7:00. That'll be the opportunity for everyone here in the community to come out and talk about the budget, whether in support or against. So, that is forthcoming as well. A couple of other items. We are getting into the season of musicals and productions. Had the opportunity yesterday to sneak over to Silas Dean and see the preparations for Beauty and the Beast. The students are excited. The number of students we have participating is quite large. And I know over at the high school, we're preparing for, I believe it is Hello Now.
Oh, dolly.
So, that's coming up as well. And let's not forget our partners with the Keane Foundation, who've been instrumental in making sure we have theater productions at all of our elementary schools. So, there's a lot going on across the district. Again, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we are moving forward on this budget in a judicious way. It is a budget that we think is going to be balanced. We recognize the fact that we're dealing with reevaluation. We recognize that we've got an upcoming referendum, and you all have been really instrumental in providing some great guidance in terms of where we need to be. So, with that, communications. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, tonight, we do not have any action items, nor do we have a presentation. So, we'll move on to meetings held, and I'm going to give up, so that Matt, you can do all the finance first.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. So, Michael stole a lot of my talking points already, but that's okay. Maybe I'll reiterate a few. So, we had the last of our two budget workshops. The last one ended on, was held on 2/22. I felt like throughout the three budget workshops, we had input from a lot of important people that work in the district, and I felt personally, as a board member who's been on this up here for four years, that this was probably the most inclusive budget workshop cycle that we've had. The discussion was the best that I've ever witnessed. And surprisingly, despite all that, it was not unanimous, but that's okay. I feel like we are $150,000 away from it being a unanimous vote on the budget that we're going to have Michael present to us, which we will ultimately vote on. The number that we came to at the final budget workshop was 4.95%. It does a lot of the things that we need. It doesn't do everything that we feel that we need, but we feel that it is an acceptable budget to put forth, considering some of the things that we want and need as a school district, and also, as Michael said, in light of the reevaluation and a possible pending referendum. So, we're ready to vote on it when Michael presents, and then ultimately, it will become our budget. And at that point, we are willing to get behind him, unlike we have done in the past, and when Michael presents it to the council and discusses why we feel it should be passed. We don't know yet if it will be passed, but the council can accept it, the council can cut it, but whatever happens, we'll figure it out, and we'll do what we have to, to provide what we feel the school district needs. Yeah, that's it on the budget workshop and the budget sessions.
Thank you. All right. And I had a CREC meeting on Wednesday, January 15th. The CREC Council is the Capital Region Education Council, and Weathersfield is a member, along with 35 other surrounding towns. The Council is responsible for the regional magnet schools and project choice. They have also organized, and they run, the Hartford Head Start. The meeting began with a presentation on CREC magnet schools. The presentation featured four CREC high school students who shared their work in restorative practices and school culture at their respective schools. We also started reviewing and approving parts of the 25-26 budget, and most of the programs will be reviewed and approved in the next few months. An important item reviewed was the financial report. Part of that review highlighted the audit report for last fiscal year. The auditors gave CREC a clean audit, and it was pointed out that the annual comprehensive financial report was available for review. Executive Director Dr. Greg Florio left our meeting to testify before the state legislature's Education Committee. The focus on his talk was asking for support of the funding to meet the increasing cost for magnet schools. All info on CREC Council meetings, magnet schools, and programs are available on the CREC website. Thank you. Now, do you want to talk about our budget meeting or our finance meeting?
Yes. So, prior to tonight's meeting, the Finance and Operations Committee met, and we discussed a couple of items. We went over the current year's budget, which is about $64.9 million, and where that stands right now at the moment, which is $60,000 under budget, relatively negligible in a budget that size. We touched on a couple of different other items. Simple conversations, short conversations, but some of the topics that we touched on were the fact that we recently made retro payments to our secretary's paras clerical and tutor bargaining unit, which was a contract that we negotiated over the summer, so they just got a lump sum payment that represented their raise that they negotiated, so good for them. We talked about open choice slots. We are graduating 13 open choice students, which is awesome to see, and it looks like we have 18 coming in for next year, which would be a net gain of five. Those are students that we appreciate and that we like to have in this school district. Kindergarten signups have been brisk. We talked about the cafeteria fund, which we wish we could be more creative with, but there's strict guidelines as to how we can spend that. Mostly, it has to be spent in the cafeteria, so we can't be too creative with it, unfortunately. And finally, as per the state, it is possible that excess cost reimbursement has the potential to increase this year by approximately $430,000 for us in our district. So, if that were to go through, at the moment, we would have a significant surplus. That sounds great, but we need to hold on to that money through the end of the school year, because that is excess cost reimbursement money. It is quite possible that a student of ours currently may have to be outplaced, in which case, we would have to spend some of that money on that. It is also possible that a special education student can move into the district, or two, or three. So, we just can't be willy-nilly with that money. We need to sit on that for the end of the school year. I wish we could be more creative with that as well, but it comes with strings attached. So, with that, that was tonight's Finance and Operations Committee meeting minutes.
Thank you, Matt. Okay. Board of meetings scheduled. We have a Board of Education and Town Council joint meeting on 2/27/25 at 4:30. Human Resource and Personnel Committee meeting on 3/3 at 6:00. Student Program and Service Committee meeting on 3/4 at 6:00. And an Advisory School Building Committee meeting on 3/10 at 7:00. And to move on, is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that you have a five-minute limit. Okay, we'll move on then. Are there any board comments?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I won't wait to the end this time. So, last week, I had the opportunity to go to the high school and see the girls' basketball senior night. It was a tough loss, but it was a great program beforehand to see the seniors being celebrated for their four years of accomplishments. Last night, I had the opportunity to go see the Nighthawks, which is our girls' hockey team. I'm not sure if people realize we do have a girls' hockey team. It's a co-op. I'm going to read off all the towns that are part of it. It's Avon, Bristol, Berlins, Coventry, Farmington, Lewis Mills, Newington, Ram, Southington, Watertown, and us.
Wow.
So, there's a lot of schools that are part of this co-op. They're having a great year. They did lose last night in the semifinals of their conference tournament, but they'll be in the state tournament starting next Wednesday, probably at Newington Arena, so mark that on your calendars. I also went to boys' hockey last night, another senior night. It was a great night. Unfortunately, they lost, but it's always great to recognize. I believe there's seven seniors this year. They're having a great year. Their conference tournament starts next week, and their states will start the weekend after, week after. So, just wanted to congratulate all the winter sports on the great seasons they're having. I believe cheerleading or dance, Mr. Emmett might know better, came in second in two spots, and they're moving on. So, we're having a lot of successful seasons, so it's great to see, and I probably stole some of your thunder down there. I apologize.
Okay.
So, that's it for me.
Those are our scholar athletes. Great. Matt?
I just want to take the time to personally thank everybody up here for the work that they've put in so far on the budget workshops and the budget in general. I also want to recognize you all for your time this year and in the past two years as board members, because these are demanding times here in Weathersfield Public Schools. Board members aren't normally being asked to do this many things. It's unusual in the sense that we are going through this building plan, and we are doing a super search, all while we're still trying to do our committee work and budget work, and whatever we have going on in the board. So, I want you to all know that your work and your time is valued, and it's noticed, and it's been seriously appreciated. So, thank you all.
And thank you. Anyone else? Janice?
Just a note on meetings scheduled. There is a WEC meeting on Monday, March 10th.
Oh, I don't even have that down here. Thank you. Anyone else? Liz?
Thank you. So, I do have a few notes I'd like to share regarding the budget items. One of the things that we had talked about during the budget session was timing. And while the requests for different positions and different funding, while it's all valid, there is timing and things that we can deliver sooner, or that we should deliver sooner rather than later. A few of the items that I am very interested in hoping that we can bring forward include providing security at the elementary schools. This is something that Mr. Emmett had proposed, and I would like to see that happen. I'm also in support of free math interventionists. You know, last year, I had asked for data. I had looked to see where the scores had increased or decreased, and I will admit that as a newer board member, I believe that my question was short-sighted. And the reason I say that is I have since learned that the role of the math interventionist plays far more in the end result. It also helps as an extended part of the leadership team and the workflow of treating children and giving them the services that they need. So, I am in favor of that. Also in favor of a pre-K and speech support. With the change in the kindergarten age, we've seen an increase, and we are expecting more of an increase in our pre-K for next year. I also support a special ed teacher at Silas Dean Middle School. And regarding two social workers, there's one position at the high school that is on grant funds this year that runs out. I'd like to see that continue with operationalizing that as part of the budget. And then also, an additional social worker to be shared across elementary schools. I know that our principals would like to have an additional social worker at most of the elementary schools, which of course, we would love to provide, but again, timing and funding, but I do think it definitely, there is a need for at least one. There is one position that I do agree is needed and would definitely benefit Weathersfield, but with regard to timing, I just don't think this is the year to ask for that position. So, we did look at the EL program, and there was consideration given to an EL director position. This has not been finalized, but where I stand is that while our EL population has seen considerable growth over the last few years, it has not grown to the extent that it has in the past year or projected for next year that we have seen in other times. And while I do think that the value of an EL director is there, I just don't see it as timing for this budget season. There's things that I have learned that I would want to share with the public with regard to the investment that we can make in our schools. Helps us to save very costly outplacement costs, things of that nature. The governor's budget, the vote recently on excess cost, definitely things, Matt, you had mentioned that we're going to keep an eye on, but these are things that we can't count on, so we need to make sure that we go with what we know we can count on. So, just a couple thoughts in that regard. The second topic I'd like to bring up is the school building project. And tonight, I will read a letter that was received, sent by Paul LaSella. He's asked me to read this out loud. And we have received quite a few letters, and this is one of them. But the reason I'm going to share this is because it's important to get out people's voices for what they're thinking, what they're concerned about, and what they would like to see happen to our town. It's very important that, as elected officials, we remember that we're really not here as our party, as much as we are here as elected officials representing the entire town. And I'm not saying that anyone is not being bipartisan or partisan, but it's really time to take off those hats and look at what our townspeople are saying to us. I do feel as though the current proposal for putting the swing school at Hamner, and also asking us to vote on going forward with two schools, is pushing people to a vote that really is not fair. I think there's many people who are in full support of redoing the schools in Weathersfield, but we're not, you know, there are people who are not in support of putting this at Hamner, right in the middle of the park, on less than, I believe, six acres, when we have over 22 buildable acres at Keisha Farm. And I think that the building committee would be best served for the town if they considered taking more time and considering where the school really should be. My concern is that we might lose a very important referendum for Weathersfield Public Schools if we don't get the swing location correct. And I would hate to see that happen. For those of you who have not had the pleasure of going into an elementary school of recent, I'd just like to draw a comparison for what these kids and teachers are dealing with. And I'm going to compare it to what it might be like in your own homes. If you had a leak through your own living room, you would never accept to just put a barrel there and collect the water and look the other way. If you had some sort of a machine broken on the top of, you know, in your attic, whether that be a handlower or anything like that, you would never let it continue to the point where it was getting close to violating a noise ordinance, making it very difficult to live in your own homes. And if you had water coming in your house, you also would make sure that there's no mold growing behind the walls, underneath the tiles, so on and so forth. And this is what's happening in Weathersfield Public Schools, and I think that everyone needs to know that. I am concerned for the condition of the schools, the conditions that the kids are living in. And even though they're there six hours a day, that's six hours of their day. When we make decisions for our own homes, we do make it based on our living in our homes 365 days a year. However, we'd never let this continue on our own homes. And so, I'm at a position where I do not agree with the swing school location of Hamner. I don't think that it takes the best, it's putting us in a position where it's using the best of what we have to offer. I think that it's splitting a park, a historic park. I am concerned about the amount of traffic that would be in the Hamner location for eight to 10 years of time, on streets that are already small, already close to a Department of Motor Vehicles, where we would be bringing additional busing and traffic down to that area for eight to 10 years. And I also don't like the, I feel like it's a disregard to the historic nature of the park. And I truly don't mean to say that in a way that is offensive to anyone who's put so much work into this effort, but to split the park right in the middle, where we would be left with one brand-new school, and then on the other side, we'd have Hamner School, which would take a while to figure out, do we have the approval to knock it down? And to say that we can put a baseball field in there, frankly, I've seen our athletes in this town, and I would be concerned if I had a window anywhere near that current location of Hamner School for a ballpark. I am concerned that the referendum may not pass because of the location of the swing school, and based on the reachouts that I have received, I would like the building committee to consider opening that up for more discussion with the town, because to me, the prize is getting the school buildings done, not necessarily losing it on something as simple as the location for the first swing school. In addition to that, I would like to share this letter that was written from Paul LaSella to the Town Council and Board of Ed, and the subject is "Opposition to Swing School Placement in Standish Park." Dear Members of the Weathersfield Town Council and Board of Education, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposal to place a swing school in Standish Park as part of the town's school construction and renovation plans. I am deeply concerned about the negative impact this decision would have on our community, our historic district, and the thousands of residents and visitors who rely on this beloved recreational space year-round. Standish Park serves as an essential recreational hub for our town, hosting basketball, pickleball, baseball, soccer, tennis, picnicking activities, and community events such as Jamie's Run, to name a few, to name one, year-round. It is one of the most heavily utilized public spaces in Weathersfield outside of Mill Woods, supporting thousands of residents and visitors annually. Converting any portion of Standish Park into a swing school would significantly diminish its value, limit access to its facilities, and erode one of the few open community spaces we have in the heart of our historic district. Additionally, Old Weathersfield is Connecticut's largest historic district, and preserving its character and integrity should be a priority for our town leadership. its character and integrity should be a priority for our town leadership. Placing a two-story school structure in this location would not only disrupt the community but also contradict the town's longstanding commitment to protecting its historical and cultural assets. Furthermore, the town already owns a large parcel of land, Keisha, that was purchased through a referendum specifically stating it could be used for municipal purposes. Utilizing this land for the swing school would be a far more suitable and responsible solution. This alternative would prevent the disruption of Standish Park's recreational offerings while ensuring that the swing school can be properly accommodated without negatively impacting the community. In addition, leveraging Keisha would allow the town to satisfy the need for school facilities and the need for athletic fields, economizing the investment in parking facilities, utilities, entry and exits, bathroom facilities, et cetera. I urge the Town Council and Board of Education to reconsider this ill-advised proposal and explore alternative locations, including Keisha, for the swing school. I also encourage the town to engage with residents in an open dialogue to ensure that any decision regarding school construction is made in the best interest of all Weathersfield residents. You cannot, in good conscience, recommend a swing school in an extremely densely populated historic neighborhood in a park that is one of the most utilized open spaces in town, while not leverage a parcel of land that has ample space, several access points, and limited neighborhood sightlines. In addition, there would be no additional impact to the Keisha neighborhood after Highcrest was demolished, whereas the current proposed location will permanently disrupt the Standish Park, excuse me, disrupt the use of Standish Park as a recreational hub. In addition, all construction in Old Weathersfield is governed by the Historic District Commission. Its primary mandate is to promote the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of Weathersfield by preserving and protecting buildings, places, and districts of historic interest within the town. Standish Park is of significant historic interest. Hamner School and its classic mid-century modern design is also of historic interest. Lastly, the swing school would be visible from four sides and would be nearly impossible to create a facade on each of those four sides that would not look like a large commercial building in the middle of Weathersfield Historic District, a true gem and tourist magnet for the town of Weathersfield. I invite each of you to go to visit Standish Park any evening or weekend day and observe the community gathering spot. I also encourage you to go sit up at Kaisha, Keisha, in the middle of the field and compare the disruption to the community that each location would have. Please do not mistake my opposition to the location of the swing school as opposition to the need for new schools. I will support a referendum, even with the considerable tax burden it will bring, as long as Standish Park is not destroyed in the process. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to your response and to a thoughtful discussion about the future of our town's public spaces and education system. Sincerely, Paul LaSella. I have one additional comment to make after Paul's letter. And while the town has mentioned in different parts that we have communicated, we're not communicating to everyone, because not everyone goes to the Town Council meetings, not everyone is on Facebook, not everyone can easily navigate our websites. And I'd also like to ask the Building Committee to consider a mailer to go out to the entire town, using postage, and I realize there will be an expense with that, to inform the entire town of what is happening. I have often seen signs up around town if someone is looking to put a deck in the back of their yard or change a garage door in Old Weathersfield, and nothing is put up in Standish Park for this. And I think that the townspeople should be made aware that this is happening. That's everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for comment?
John?
Marjorie?
There you go. You can go.
I was going to say that the Screenagers, the Webb Schools Holding a Screenagers showing, which is like a movie, they've made several versions of this, but it's basically a movie. And this one's for parents of elementary schools to teach them about the dangers of too much screen and also like cell phones and other kinds of screens. So they're able to get a free showing of this on March 19th at Webb for elementary school students. That's, I think, more information's going to go out on that. And there's also the annual Safe Grad Dinner Dance fundraiser on March 7th, so next Friday, and it's BYO everything, BYOE. And it's just a great way to support Safe Grad, which is, you know, every year they have to raise thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars for raffle prizes and like a big party for the kids who just graduated. And it's, every year, it's a little harder to get those funds, and things get more expensive. So if you are interested in attending or getting a table with people, they're going to have a DJ and dancing, and then I guess I've heard of really good raffle prizes. So that's that. I wanted to speak to Liz's comments on the building situation, and I think what people just need to be a little more patient, because the process is still happening. Just from her comments and then the letter, there's a lot of assumptions and some things that actually just aren't actually correct. Definitely, there needs to be better communication, but there's also uncertainty because there's still, decisions are still being made. And so I definitely want to work on clarifying what's happening, and John is our liaison to the Building Committee, and summarizing kind of where they are. But the process takes a while, and there's a lot of things that are still not clear about what the best options are. They're still getting, figuring out specs, they're still figuring out space, and I'm sure he would, he wanted to talk about this more, he knows more about this. But they, you know, the Building Committee, TSKP, sorry, the consultant, has met with the Historic Commission. I've heard rumors like nothing can get demolished in the Historic Commission. That's just not true. There have been things demolished. Actually, two houses were just demolished a few years ago. And so if you look at, you just have to look and wait and be patient and not, you know, not assume all the worst. And I also want to just be factually, because I understand everyone's concerns, I understand why people have maybe don't want it in Keisha or don't want it at Hamner, but the last referendum, the school was slated to be in the same field, the last referendum. Part of what we found as a survey, when, you know, when we started here in this town, this Board of Ed, after a year, we put out a survey to figure out like what, why did people vote against it or why did they vote for it? So the people who voted no, 14, only 14 out of 800 or something who filled out the survey, 14 said it was location that made them vote no. And the notice that went out to everybody did say what would happen with each school. There's going to be a new Highcrest on the field next to Highcrest, and Highcrest would be the turnaround school. And then they're, at the same time, they're going to build a new Hamner right on Stillman Field, which is Stillman Field. I'd also want to say factually correct, it is not Standish Park. So just to make the facts clear that this didn't just come out of nowhere, that there had been other plans to do this, because it's the natural inclination to build right next to the school you have to, you're looking to replace. And as far as I'm concerned, I can't imagine anyone wanting to say, like, I will wait for the Building Committee's recommendations, I'm not going to make any more assumptions, but I, that building, my kids went to Hamner, it is not a mid-century modern fancy building, is probably never should have been built, it's a horrible, horrible building that needs to be replaced. How that's done and where it's done, that's going to be a process we're watching, but I would say that we have to just wait to see, there's experts that are listening and analyzing this, and I just won't, I don't, I just would caution people to not say, you know, or assume facts that aren't in evidence.
Thank you.
Something fun first before I jump into that. Last night, I had the privilege of bringing myself and my family to the Hamner sixth-grade Committee's event at Puerto Vallarta. At this event, I did have the privilege of shaking Principal Cohn's hand and wishing him good luck. And it was a very awkward handshake, and I was wondering why it was so awkward. So Patrick, if you're listening, great poker face. Welcome back. I'm glad you're still here. All my kids, obviously, were there under Patrick, so thank you so much. Onto the Building Committee stuff. I think you heard some comments here, and Marjorie, thank you, you did bring up a lot that I did have written down here. The first thing I'm going to say is, and Liz, we can still be friends after this, I am slightly disappointed in your comments, and it's mainly because I think last Board of Ed meeting, we both of us said that regardless of where the swing space is, we need to do something, right? And it's disappointing to hear, and it's okay that you changed your mind, and I'm not going to hold you accountable for that, but what I will say is something that Marjorie said, and I'm going to say the same thing, is TSKP, we hired them, the Building Committee into the town, hired them to be the experts on this project, right? None of us up here can build a school, at least I don't think so. We hired them to make us the right recommendations, to give us the data to present to the town of what the recommendations were. There is not a parcel of land on this town that wouldn't have come with opposition. That's just the bottom line. Could have been at Keisha, could have been at Highcrest, Stillman, they're all going to have opposition. There's always going to be people that are against it, and that's fine. That's how our democratic process plays out. You're entitled to do that. But I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is not an ill-advised decision that was made. TSKP gave data points, we have data points on this. They showed everyone, and we can share that again, as to why Stillman ended up being the recommendation. So again, I'm going to stand by the experts in this situation. And I want to point out also, without giving away my public address, there's not a single person right up here that's impacted more than me on this. I live directly across the street from Hamner and have since I moved here in 2007. I welcome the opportunity to change. Do I want construction vehicles out in front of my house? No, not particularly. But to see the progress in this town, and I think that's what it stands for, it's about progress, it's about getting our kids these buildings that we've needed for a very long time, and I think there's no better time than now to do this. So I just want to make sure. And then something Marjorie said, and I'll just pick up on that, is the plan is still being discussed, and I think patience is key. Marjorie's right. The Building Committee and next steps are to get the plan presented, ready to get presented to us, the official plan, right, to us and Town Council. So you probably will get a lot of data that's out there, and some of it's right, some of it is stretched through opinion, and that's okay too, but just make sure you're getting your information from us. You can email the Board, you can email the Building Committee, you can email Town Council. We'll all give you the right information. And then obviously, I want to go to our public comments, because I think they were great, and we can all do more to communicate this project, and that is something we absolutely will do. It's something that I will continue to do even better than before, and I wanted to say that I appreciate those comments. So thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good night.
Anyone else? Liz?
Thank you, Marjorie and John, for responding to my comments, and I may stand corrected, so I want to clarify my understanding now. So, Marjorie, you had mentioned that we do need more communication, but one of the reasons is it's not totally clear yet, but, you know, what the path is, and so I think there's an opportunity for the Building Committee there. And yes, John, thank you for your endorsement. I know it's okay, it changed my mind. But if the plan is still being discussed before people assume and form opinion, does that mean that the plan could still change and it would not be at Stillman Park?
Point of order, we can't have discussion. There are more.
Yeah, I would just, but I overrule it at this point, okay? I wanted to just hear.
Okay.
And we won't continue it, but yes, there were some questions there, and not all the information is out. I wouldn't say we can change it, but not all the information's out.
Okay.
Okay?
Point of clarification, you can't overrule a point of order. Just point of clarification.
I actually just read that. Okay. So we have any more closing remarks? Because I have a few here. Okay. The Weathersfield Education Foundation met on Wednesday, the 19th. The foundation's mission is to enhance and enrich the curriculum of Weathersfield Public Schools. The group is working on fundraising for teachers' grants, and the grant process opens for the teachers in March. We also have our marketing and tech-savvy Angelica Data working the foundation's social media presence. Thank you. Superintendent, search committee worked all day Sunday on interviewing candidates. We received 30 applications, an overwhelming number, that the committee narrowed to five and interviewed four. We have another day of interviewing on March 9th, maybe not all day, and the Board will keep you updated on the progress of our search. And again, thank you, everyone, for the all-dayer. And a thank you to our school administrators who put together the Friday update. We appreciate info and pics on life in our schools as we appreciate the glimpse of the incredible learning environments that our schools offer. Okay. Angelica, how's life at the high school?
There's a lot of great things that are happening. So first of all, as Mr. Emmett mentioned, Hello Dolly, the tickets just started going on sale this past Monday, and the cabaret for a cause for this year, like, we're starting to meet up soon to start planning for that this year. The cause is going to be to raise money for mental health, specifically through the National Alliance of Mental Illnesses. And then this Monday, the DECA students are going to compete at the state conference or competition. And then we did have a lot of great things happening with sports, as Mr. Carey mentioned. Another great thing, too, a sophomore, I don't remember his name, but he broke a 23-year-old record for indoor track, which is really awesome. Yeah, the dance team.
Indoor track.
Yeah. And then the dance team, like, they've been doing amazing, too, with states, and then they're going on to regionals, I believe. And the cheer team, they earned the title of CCC champions, I believe. I'm not sure about that, but they also did great. And tomorrow's culture night. We're going to have around, I think, like, 20 different booths, but there's going to be countries, students representing countries from Albania, South Korea, Puerto Rico, Italy, France. It's going to be great, so those are my updates.
Where is this?
From 5:00 to 7:00 in the cafeteria at the high school. Anyone's welcome to attend.
Thank you. All right, right? Okay. Tomorrow evening? Basically. Thank you. Okay, we're all set. We'll move on. Okay, is there any unfinished business tonight? All right. My quote, "As we work to build for our future," a quote from Walt Disney, "If you dream it, you can do it." So thank you all for joining us tonight. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone. Our next Board of Ed meeting is March 11th. Thank you.
She can shut it down.